Start with a roll call, Kim.
Yes, why don't you start with a roll call?
Okay, I am here, Scott Bergen. Tim Ekonopoly, are you here?
I am here.
Richard Kapacinski, are you here?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
All right, so we have our three. We usually have five folks, but two are unable to be here, but we have three, which is a quorum, which is a wonderful thing. So let me, before we get going here, what I need to do is to, let me just see. Kim, something just came up. It says this meeting is being recorded. Do I just press continue?
Yes, it has to be recorded for it to be virtual.
No, I know. I just wanted to-
I'm the one recording it, don't worry.
Right. I just didn't want to touch something and then have everything go blank.
Yep.
So, all right. This is required because this is a virtual meeting. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation under the New York State Senate Bill. It looks like S. 50001 and the New York State Assembly Bill A. 40001, which has extended virtual access to public meetings held pursuant to New York State's open meetings law. This legislation allows the CBA meeting to be held remotely and allows the public to virtually participate. And that is what we're doing this evening. We have a fairly light agenda. One thing I would like to do before I get going here, we've had some changes. And I did want to acknowledge that Chris Hedges, who was our ZBA Secretary Extraordinaire for many years, has unfortunately left us for, I guess, greener pastures or whatever. But Chris was a fantastic ZBA Secretary. I've been here since 2003. And in the 18 years I've been here, I have not seen a Secretary who is any better. And in my estimation, at least so far, she is the GOAT, greatest of all time. And I just wanted to publicly say how much I appreciate everything Chris did while she was with us. She went the extra mile. She helped streamline a lot of the procedures and make the position work a whole lot easier. And I'm sure she'll do great wherever she is. And she was just fantastic. And I just really want to thank her for, you know, all of her time. So that's the bad news. The good news is that we get to welcome Gretchen Smith. And Gretchen Smith, some of you folks may know, is the longtime Planning Board Secretary and worked, actually shoulder to shoulder pretty much with Chris. And she has agreed to take on the role, aside from being the Planning Board Secretary, to be the ZBA Secretary. And, you know, she's fantastic. She does a great job at the Planning Board. I know she's going to do a fantastic job with us. And she has a lot of knowledge about the ZBA because she worked with Chris shoulder to shoulder. So it's going to be a seamless transition. I think we're extremely lucky to have Gretchen. And I just wanted to welcome her aboard. So after all those kudos, I think it's time for us to get to the agenda here now. Because of the transition, we don't have the meeting minutes for the last meeting. That'll happen at the next meeting. We'll approve tonight's meeting minutes and the ones for the previous meeting. And the next thing that is up is new business. And I see Darren is here. This is case 1020 McLeod. And Darren, you've been through this before many times. So if you could take us through the presentation of the application, as you know, and this is for the public as well. All we're doing right here is to take a look at the application that's been submitted and to see whether it is sufficient for us to accept. Nothing's going to be done other than to make a motion, hopefully, to accept the application instead of public hearing. So with that said, Darren, can you take it away and explain what you want to do or what your clients want to do?
Sure, certainly. So Darren Davidovich with the Art of Building, representing Justin and Kate McLeod, who own the property at 531 Old Werthenburg Road. Property is at the corner of Primrose Hill Road, Schultz Hill Road, Werthenburg Road, and Old Werthenburg Road, right at the corner of that intersection. And what we have on the screen is a fairly lengthy presentation that we submitted to the Planning Board. And we've been through a few times with the Planning Board. And what I did for the ZBA purposes is we submitted the full version of this with our application along with other supporting information, but I cut this down by about 60 slides. So if you like, I can sort of speed through the slides or just really, really skip through and go to the, you know, the most important ones from a zoning perspective.
Yeah, you submitted, and I was actually talking to Chris about this. This is one of the most extensive applications I've ever seen. So thank you. And that's great. The more, the more information, the better.
Okay.
But yeah, if you could just, you know, briefly explain to the board what you want to do, which buildings are going to be affected. And I know we have two variances that are being requested, but if you could just go through them.
Sure, sure. So Kim, if we could just flip to the first slide there, the second slide. Perfect. So here's the site plan. So we're dealing with an 11 acre parcel shaped like a boot. You can see the outline of the parcel there in the RC5 zone. And if you look at some of the exhibits below there, there's the boot again in yellow. And just full disclosure, the orange parcels across from that are under common ownership. So Justin and Kate also own the parcels across the street from this 11 acre parcel. For purposes of this meeting, there's nothing being discussed or proposed on those parcels at this moment. I think we can flip to the next slide. And there are several existing structures on this parcel. And this is really the reason that you have such an extensive presentation in front of you, because this parcel is a historic site. And it's viewed not only as the house that is historic, but it's viewed as the composition of these buildings, the relationship of these buildings to one another that creates some of the historic character present on this parcel. And that was mentioned in the National Register nomination that was done for this site. So when dealing with the Planning Board, we had to really thoroughly evaluate what we were doing in context of the historic nature of not just the main house, but all of the outbuildings. And a fairly new concept in historic preservation is that you also consider the impact of the landscape and any changes that would affect the landscape, either positively or negatively. There's really been a change in the way the Park Service views these things. And they look not only at structures, now they look at landscape features as well. But most importantly, from a zoning perspective, there are six structures currently on this parcel, probably technically five, because one of them is very small. But there's, and they're numbered, and these numbers stick with us throughout the entire presentation. Number one is the main house, the main residence. And then going through, there's names for them all, but there's a little house, what we call the main barn, which is going to be important in a minute. The main barn is proposed for conversion to a detached accessory dwelling, a run-in shed slash recreation barn. So there's two buildings there that will be ultimately combined together. And then there's a pool house and what we call a well house, which is a very small structure over a drinking water well. But more important is our proposal and what we're talking about doing with these buildings, which is on the next slide. For starters, we had come into the Planning Board with a much more aggressive proposal. We had actually proposed to move some of these structures to separate them a little bit on the site. And through very careful evaluation, we've decided that they should all stay in place. One, it's what makes it very historic to keep them where they are and keep their relationship to one another. And two, we think we can accomplish what we're trying to do with just a few minor changes to one of the buildings. One of these buildings is not historic, which I'll get to in just a minute. But essentially, what we're proposing to do is take these same structures and convert them to uses that are a little bit more appropriate for a modern lifestyle. Obviously, they were built over a number of years going back into the 1800s. And the purposes they were originally built for no longer serve a modern lifestyle. So we're proposing to completely renovate all of these buildings, which are in dire need of some renovation, and convert them to a use that's more appropriate for something that our clients would do with the property today. Kim, I think we can flip through. I'll get to some of the more important details as we roll through. This chart is pretty relevant to zoning because this lists all of the square footages of these buildings. And it brings up the first issue that we have and the reason that we're here tonight. And that is the total of these buildings in the form in which they're proposed exceeds the 1,500 square feet of accessory structure that's allowed in the RC5 zone. So as you can see, our total in that fourth column at the bottom there is ending up at 2,912 feet. So quite a bit more than the allowable 1,500 square feet in the RC5 zone. What's probably most important is that almost all of this square footage exists today. The only new construction proposed is the 80 square feet foot tool shed, which will function as a bit of a pool storage shed, a garden shed on the site. But all of the other structures on this list exist on the property today, with one other exception, and this is actually labeled wrong, but the, the pool house should be shown in blue rather than recreation barn because we're proposing to tear down a run-in shed that was built somewhere in the 1990s and put a new structure in its place. We just determined that that nonhistoric structure really wasn't worth making an investment in. So we're proposing to take it away and rebuild something of the same size and massing in its spot so that we don't end up renovating a building that's basically made out of texture 111 plywood and trying to convert it to something that we can condition the space inside of and add windows to. So variance request number one is for additional square footage, 2,912 square feet versus the 1,500 square feet allowed in the zone. So an increase of, I think it's 14.
1412.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And then I think, Kim, we can flip through. Maybe I can do a better job of going quickly. Just, I kept these in because one of the important things for the Planning Board to consider was they had asked us to determine what the period of significance of the property was. So we did a pretty extensive review of aerial photographs. And we were able to determine, and you can see through the progression of images here, what buildings were built on or near the property when. And if you go to the next slide, if you look at 1900, 1900, the period between 1800 and 1900, really ending in 1900, was where the property was at its maximum build out. And that is what we've determined to be the period of significance. That's when the structures had the most historic character. They were most in agricultural use. They were done under common ownership for similar reasons to one another. And the Planning Board has accepted the conclusion that 1900 is the period that we're really calling the most significant portion of period in the site's history. So everything we're proposing in 2021, with the exception of a little bit of a driveway change and some roadway change, would have been on the site in 1900. And that includes the addition of the reestablishment of an orchard that had disappeared and the removal of some things like an above ground swimming pool. Some remains have been above ground swimming pool and such. And I should point out that we're also proposing to add a swimming pool, which is the blue rectangle that you see there. So not a structure, but something additional that obviously wasn't in existence in 1900. But part of the reason for this long presentation is to determine the period of significance and then to relate our proposal to that. And interestingly enough, all of the structures we're talking about existed in the 1900 period. I think we can flip, Kim. Some photographs, pretty helpful because there's a lot of squares and rectangles on that plan. But you can see the main house just behind it, what we're calling the little house. We're proposing to convert that to an office, a home office. That little well house, hard to see in the picture, but just teeny tiny little well house. The main barn straight ahead in the driveway there, that is proposed for conversion to a detached accessory dwelling, which I'll get to in a minute, our second variance request. And then the pool house and not pictured, the run-in shed behind it, which are proposed to be converted to recreation space and pool house space. Pool house is currently a chicken coop or was once a chicken coop. We have another slide with a view from the rear of the property, which shows you the rest of the structures. So before, left to right, now right to left. Main house, the little house again, the well house, the main barn proposed for a detached accessory dwelling. And then you can see the pool house and the current run-in shed, the one building that's not historic, not part of the period of significance that we are proposing to tear down and reconstruct. If you can move to, this maybe makes things more confusing, maybe helps. This is our landscape plan, probably more significant from a planning perspective. But all of the development, as you can see, has really always been concentrated in this bottom left-hand corner of the site. And that is something that we obeyed with our proposal to the Planning Board, keeping the buildings in place, reusing them, adapting them in place. And then you can see what we feel is a pretty careful insertion of things like the swimming pool and a garden and that little tool shed, all keeping the same massing, but pulling them just far enough away from the existing structures so that there's no confusion around what is historic and what is not. And it actually works pretty well from a site planning perspective because sitting in the pool, you get this long view out across the upper portion of the boot. And it's a real nice long view. So kind of the same feel to the property that has always been there from the time of the period of significance to today.
Darren, this is 11 acres or so.
11 acres, yeah.
And I know they own, you just indicated they own the property across the street. Is that right?
Correct.
Are there neighbors, you know, on other sides, either on the same side of the street or surrounding in some fashion?
Certainly. So if we look at Schultz Hill Road on the left of the screen there, there are some, you know, houses that front on Schultz Hill Road. As I mentioned before, our clients own everything on the bottom of the screen across from them. So there aren't neighbors there. At the top of the screen, in that little notch in the boot, there is a residence there. It's actually an active taxidermy operation. And then as we go down Old Werthenburg Road, there are several other residences. As you get down that private road, by the way, Old Werthenburg Road is a private road. So nobody in a super immediate proximity, but certainly there are neighbors. I think we can continue, probably flip through, just some photos, some significant views from the site. There's that long view I mentioned a minute ago. Probably worth keeping flipping through the slides. We do an analysis of each structure in that longer presentation that you have. There are pieces of it described here. I basically pulled a lot of the slides out, but each building takes you through a progression about what the building was, what its aliases are, because it's very confusing. These buildings all have lots of different names over the years. And we give some historic and present day photos. Kim, I think you can keep flipping unless anyone has questions on these. We give some interior photos of all the buildings, including the main house, which you see here. We talk about what the elevations will be now and in the future, what the materials are and what the significant changes to the structure are. Keep flipping. We give floor plans for each of the structures. And basically, I want to speed through to the point where we get to the proposed detached accessory dwelling, which is probably most relevant because that's the second variance we're here to talk about. The little house, again, some present day photos showing just how badly deteriorated it is. These buildings are all fairly well racked. They have a lot of insect damage, a lot of rot. Many of them have new siding, new roofs, things that are not historic, which we're intending to put back on the buildings. This is the little house that we're proposing for a home office. And here we are to the main barn, which is, this is the building we're proposing to make a detached accessory dwelling. So this building has a footprint of 1,008 square feet. Its actual interior floor area, as proposed, would be 1,874 square feet. So we know that to be in excess of the 900 square feet of detached accessory dwelling space allowed in this zone in Reinbeck. So the second variance that we are requesting the board consider is for additional square footage to be allowed to be inhabited in this barn. Barn is built in 1850. The concept behind it is this is a way to keep the barn in productive use, justify a very significant investment that is required to preserve this barn. We're actually going as far as disassembling the timber frame in our proposal and putting an actual foundation under this with real footings below frost line, reassembling the timber frame and putting back the floorboards and other components of the barn around the timber frame as a way to save it. And as we flip through some of the images of this barn, you'll get a sense of just how badly in need of some renovation it is and rehabilitation. You see that picture in the top right-hand corner, you can see the Boeing ridge line there. And harder to see, which is shown in the bottom pictures, is just how much rust that has caused on the outside walls. So the building basically looks like a football at this point, and it's just bulging out at the sides. That last picture on the bottom right shows you some significant racking as well. You know, over that four foot level, you can see somewhere in about the neighborhood of two inches of racking over just four feet. So the building's bulging out and leaning to one side. So needs a pretty significant investment to save this thing. As you can see on the left-hand bottom pictures, it's essentially sitting on dirt. It was built on some field stone. So it's no surprise, you know, with some structural problems inside, that the snow's really been wreaking havoc on it. So our proposal, our client's proposal, is to convert it to a residence, restore the barn and make it look the way it always did even more historic than it currently sits today because you can see even some novelty siding that's been put on the building fairly recently. So we would get back to a much more historic exterior and keep the interior looking as historic as possible, just converting it to residential space. And then I think we can flip through pretty quickly, Kim, some interior photos. You know, there weren't historically cinder blocks holding up portions of the building. And pressure treated lumber didn't exist back in 1850, so on and so forth. And you can see the timber frame's been somewhat hacked into, but is in fairly good condition. So, you know, with some reassembly and some securing of some additional parts that have been taken away, we think we can get this thing pretty straight and still keep its character. You can see the original floorboards there as well. And then we give you the proposed elevations, a little more description of materials, what the composition changes would be to the exterior, like with the others. I think you can keep flipping, Kim. Proposed floor plan. So the floor plan is basically a two-bedroom. I think it's one bathroom. Yeah, two bedrooms, one bath. Most of the living takes place on the first floor. The second floor is just open space. Yoga room, meditation room. You know, there's not any partitioning really proposed on the second level. Just a nice place to open up those large windows on the gables and just appreciate a nice day. But our proposal is to utilize the entire interior of the barn. We just really didn't find a way to strip away any square footage without compromising the way the timber frame relates to itself and some of the interior perspectives you get of the timber frame and the way the ceiling and the roof is framed. So our clients, you know, were very strongly in favor of just being able to appreciate the barn, even though they really only intend to use the first floor for residential purposes, per se. And then, you know, just more support for taking down this structure number four and replacing it. You can see the texture 111 run-in shed that we're talking about replacing. So a remove and replace in similar, with similar massing and more historic looking features, but not making a claim that the replacement building would have been historic. And on the next slide, you can see a little more of how this building is built. And then in the subsequent slides, you can see what we're talking about doing with it. So retaining the massing, but then giving it a lot of windows and natural light so that it functions really well next to the swimming pool. And floor plans with this building as well, like the others, just to demonstrate what our proposal is for the square footage we're hoping to gain. And then the last building is the, the current chicken coop, although there's no poultry in it, which is also proposed for conversion in place. And this is another timber frame structure where we hope to use all of the remaining elements and supplement them with things that would have been more in the character of the building. Hard to see here, there's quite a bit of pressure treated lumber in that timber frame. And the siding on the building actually has ink stamps on it. So it was purchased at a lumberyard sometime in the fairly recent, in fairly recent history. And there's our proposal for how to renovate this barn. Hopefully, it's as straight as the pictures. And then the proposed floor plan for, for this. And then just very quickly, because I know it matters, are some of the other components proposed for the site. We are proposing a swimming pool with an offset spa component. The idea is that you could use the spa in the colder months and close the swimming pool. So just to get a little more season out of it, we're proposing a 10 by 22 vine arbor, just as some privacy for the pool, a little bit of shade near the pool and some aesthetics, frankly. A little kitchen garden, just growing tomatoes and herbs and things like that to cook with. And then between the vine arbor and the kitchen garden is that little tool shed, that 80 square feet of tool shed that I had mentioned earlier. So that's a completely new addition that we're hoping to be allowed to put on the property. An image of the swimming pool. This is a pool we just recently completed on Violet Hill Road. Very similar, just narrow bluestone coping, dark interior, good night. And some other elements, a pool enclosure in keeping with the agricultural character of the property. This is a project we finished over on Primrose Hill fairly recently, so a similar fence to that. You can see the bluestone patio. And then there's a little more detail on that tool shed, which you can see is really just a place to put chlorine and pool floats and things like that, maybe some rakes and wheelbarrows.
Darren, was that the place we went out to maybe a year or two ago? It had a, also had a big barn behind it?
Yes, yeah, also a conversion to a detached accessory dwelling, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then just a bit of a summary, probably more from a historic and planning perspective this summer. But I think just the main highlights are that, you know, we're trying to work with the structures that are on the site. We're trying to give everything back as much historic character as we possibly can. And we're just trying to, you know, put these into a productive use. The buildings require some very, very large investments just to salvage them. So to go another step further and make the buildings usable for our clients is, you know, sort of the impetus for this whole proposal. And then back to that table.
Do any of my board members have any questions or concerns about the presentation?
I don't. I do not.
I have a question. Am I on?
You are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Hi Darren, how you doing?
Richard, how are you?
Good, thank you. So you said one building was being taken down and starting over?
Correct. That would be the run-in shed.
Oh, it wasn't the main barn. The main barn stays.
Well, the main barn gets deconstructed and reconstructed with the same parts. So yes, there's, there are two buildings that essentially get taken down. But the main barn's going back together, the same Lego pieces. And the run-in shed is going to go in a dumpster and a completely new structure built.
And the running shed is the one that the footprint will be changed, not the, not the main barn?
Correct. The run-in shed changes slightly in footprint.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have any questions or concerns. This is probably, as I said, I commend you. It was probably the most thorough and extensive application I've seen in 18 years.
It felt like it.
That's a good thing.
A lot of work.
Yeah. So unless, Tim, and any, any other questions, concerns? I don't, I don't need any.
No, I don't.
Usually I need more information. I need elevations or I need renderings or whatever, but everything's here, so.
I have a quick question, Darren. Do you, do you know how the, the owners plan to use the accessory dwelling unit? Is it going to be just like a guest house? Is it going to be for short-term rental or anything? Do you have any indication as to what they're proposing?
I do. I believe it's either going to be for their nanny or just the- I do. I believe it's either going to be for their nanny or just their, you know, they're just friends and family. They they have a live in nanny now, and they're debating whether she would live there or on one of the lots across the street, whether they would build a house over there for her. And then if not, it would be just be a place for family from largely Boston area. The client's brother is actually an architect on Nantucket, so he comes fairly often. So so people like that. He was the one actually who did a lot of this architectural work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well. Last chance, Richard, Tim. Okay. I I think the application is very, very complete. And as a result, I'll make a motion that we accept the application as complete and and then set it up for a public hearing. So I make that motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, Richard seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And that's me, Tim and Richard, all three of us. No abstentions and no one against. So the next thing we're going to do is we're going to set it for a public hearing. The next public hearing, I do not have the date, but perhaps somebody has a calendar nearby. It'll be in November. It'll be the third Wednesday of November.
Yep, November seventeenth. Thanks, Gretchen.
November seventeenth, all right. Darren, is that okay? Are you able to be present?
Great with me. Sure.
Okay, so as you know, what will happen here is that the neighbors and anybody who's really interested, but the neighbors in particular will be notified about this. They'll have an opportunity to question you about the application. And we'll go through the same process. You've been through this before, so you know what to expect.
Surely.
So we'll see you on November seventeen.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Now I see Kim, just looking through the cheat sheet that you're always kind enough to provide to us. That the planning board has already declared this to be a type two action, so we'll adopt that classification. And also the only referral is to the town, the Rhinebeck Planning Board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that leaves us, I think with who is going to be assigned to the resolution? Tim, you have one on today. I think you have Astonato. Richard, I'll spare you. We have two people who are not present, so maybe I'll pick on them.
That's a great idea.
You like that? I figured you'd like that. I Kim, what do you think about Catherine?
Yeah, I think this would be a great one for Catherine, as long as she doesn't mind. But certainly I think she would find this one is very interesting.
I this is kind of right up her alley. So I think she finds this very interesting. So I will tentatively assign it to her for the resolution. And she'll take care of it unless she protests violently, which I doubt will happen. Okay, so I think, is that it for this, Kim? I think we're done with this application?
Yes.
All right. All right. So next, what we have up is we have a public hearing and it's on Astonato and I assume there is somebody here to give that presentation. I see Mr. Astonato, but.
Yep. Hi there, it's Michael Asnado. It's nice to see you all.
I'm sorry.
Please don't worry about it. Is Richard Countryman on from Solar Generation?
I do not.
No worries. I'm happy to to present.
I don't see him present.
Okay, no, no worries. So so hi, everyone. And I will be very grateful. I am the I am the property owner at one twenty two Morton. This is in relation to a proposed side yard setback variance for a proposed ground mount solar installation. And to the extent you've been able to review the site, you'll understand it's in a very unobtrusive location. And it borders the property line in a heavily wooded area that we think is is well screened from the neighbor and otherwise is not visible to any other party. So I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to take any questions.
And Scott, you had asked the applicant to provide a rendering as to what is expected. They did provide that. I'm just putting it up on the screen now.
Yep, they did do that. And thank you very much. It's always very, very helpful. I have to admit, I'd like to get out there. I know it's been staked and everything else and we you may have had some other board members out there already, so. But I'll take advantage of that.
Sure.
The the I have no questions about it. It's a pretty simple application. But I think, Kim, and maybe we can make a record of this, there there may be some technical glitch, and I just want you to address that if you could.
Sure. Mr. I'm sorry, was it Asnado?
Asnado, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Did you? I know Gretchen tried to reach out to Richard and to Vicky, who I believe is out of the office. Did you provide? We asked for a photo of the public hearing notice sign. It was indicated that it was up, but we never had any sort of picture provided. So can you just give us a little update as to if that's been provided and if you have a photo of it?
Yeah, it as of Monday, it was there. It was there all weekend. I don't have a photo, but I can certainly reach out and make sure you get that as soon as tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, because that's we just wanted to make I know that everything else, the notices were sent and everything, so.
Sure. No worries.
Is is there anyone from the public? Anybody on this Zoom call who has an interest in this application who would like to be heard?
Scott, would you like to just formally open the public hearing?
Sure. Do you want me to make a motion or just?
Yeah, just a quick motion just to open the.
Yeah, all right. So I make a motion that we open the public hearing and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and that is Tim Ekinopoly. Richard?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all three of us who are present. So all right, well, we've already actually kind of started it. And Mr. Asnado and by the way, anybody who is present here, if I mispronounce your name, please let me know because I want to get it right. I don't have any questions. My board members, do you guys have any questions, concerns? Anything you'd like to address to the applicant?
No, I don't. I don't. It seems pretty straightforward. I guess the question is, is it possible for me to come by on Saturday?
Happy to have that happen. So just give me a rough timeframe and I'll be happy to meet you.
Okay, I'll give you a call like Friday, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Happy to do it.
I definitely can't do it on. I'm sorry.
I'd like to go out and see it as well. So I do you want to do or you want to make it another time, Scott, or I could jump in.
No, 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 no. If you two guys want to go out together, that's fine. I just can't make it on Saturday, so I'll make it another time. That's fine.
All right. So Tim, can you keep me posted on what time you're?
She's.
Yeah, do you want to just say two o'clock? Two o'clock.
Yeah, that's fine for me, gentlemen. So just come by. Thank you.
All right.
Mister, one more thing, Mr. Asnado, I think your neighbor where this border is up to is is it Paige?
I believe that's right. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, have you spoken with her? Has she spoken with you at all?
As far as the answer is no, but as far as I can tell, she's not been there very often. So I've seen very little activity at the house.
Yeah. All right. And I mean, she would have seen the public notice out in front. And if so, if she's if she had any concerns, I'm sure she would have. She'd be on tonight or 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 she would have knocked on your door, but it seems simple. When I first heard of the variance, I thought you were closer to the road. And I just wanted to, I know the road really well, and I just wanted to make sure we don't see that from Morton Road.
Nope.
And I don't think we.
Yeah, it's it's very tucked away and happy to show you on Saturday.
And as I recollect from, I think the last hearing that you really can't see it from the river either.
No, we're blessed because it's 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 in a sort of hollow behind some trees, so you can't see it from the river view either. So that's correct.
Yeah, that that's important. That that's good, too. And and obviously, everybody's gotten their notification, too. So any neighbors and all that kind of stuff. Kim, Mr. Asnado has indicated obviously that the the sign was up and all that kind of stuff. I know that was the only technical thing we were really dealing with. Do you have any quarrel with me making a motion to close the public hearing, given the representation made by the applicant?
Um, I think it should be fine. I would like to see a photo of it. I think Vicky had mentioned she had a photo of it. So if it's my recommendation, just to make sure that we have everything all set, it's just to continue the public hearing, just to make sure we have that photo. And if for some reason we don't, you know, we can reach out to Mr. Asnado and then he could just put it up again. I I work on Morton Road, so I do remember seeing it. I believe I do remember seeing it. I didn't see it today when I went by. So if we just.
I'm on the road. I'm on the road every day. I mean, I know I don't have a picture, but I know it was there.
Okay. Um, because we just have to just make sure it was substantially complied with. I believe all the notices were sent out by mail. I guess, you know, we have me as a witness and Richard as a witness that it was.
Well, you know what? What we can do is this and and Mr. Asnado, I just want to let you know what we're talking about here. Typically, what we would do if we had absolutely no issues, and I don't think we do have an issue, quite frankly. We would close the public hearing and that would begin our timeframe to do a resolution, which is sixty two days. And we historically, especially on the applications such as this, would give the resolution at the next meeting. Out of an abundance of caution, what we can do, and I think maybe we should do, is just to keep the public hearing open. However, instead of putting it out another month afterwards, which nobody wants. What we'll do is we can keep the public hearing open, which it allows us to make sure that everything, you know, we have all of our I's dotted and our T's crossed, and then we will have the resolution available at the close of the public hearing at the next at the next hearing. We typically don't do it that way, but in order to expedite things, and so you don't lose any time. I think that probably satisfies everything. Is that okay, Kim?
Yeah, that sounds fantastic. Thank you.
And again, Mr. Asnado, Asnado, if you can just have Vicky or Richard Countryman send us the photo that they they said that they took, that would be great. And then we can just really handle this quickly.
Yeah, happy to do it.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so we'll get those. We'll get out there and take a look at it. But at this point in time, I'll make a motion that we keep the public hearing open. But also that it's our intention that we will close a public hearing at the next meeting and we will also have a resolution ready to be read at the next next at the close of the next public hearing on November, what was that, seventeenth?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a second for that?
I second.
Okay, that's Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all three of us. Me, Tim and Richard. All right, Mr. Asnado, you will hear from us. We will visit you at your residence to take a look at this thing. And well, we should have everything. You know, cleaned up and ready to go at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
And Scott, just for the just to finish up some procedural issues, the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board did provide their referrals saying that there was no significant or environmental concerns. And again, it had already been approved, conditioned on these variances at the planning board already. I do not believe we received referral out from the WAC. But we can perhaps check in to see if they submit one before the next meeting. If not, if thirty days have elapsed, we can provide, we can continue with the application without their.
Yeah, and it will, it will the timeframe will have been exhausted. And I do see that it looks like July nineteenth, there was approval by the planning board, so.
You are not destroying.
So, all right, great. Well, thank you.
Take care.
Take care. Have a good evening. All right, and last but not least is the Red Wing application. And I see that Ryan is here. Ryan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Why don't, well, I'll make a motion that we open up the public hearing. I know we continued it because the planning, or excuse me, the zoning board wanted an opportunity to go out and to do a site visit. That site visit was done by all members. And anyway, I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I second.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that Tim, Richard and myself all send the affirmative to to open up the meeting. So with that said, what we're going to do here is, and I assume there's some folks from the public who would like to be heard. But first, we're going to have the applicant, the applicant just make a very, very brief overview of their position. And then I will ask folks who want to be heard on this to unmute, to say your name, where you reside and to speak slowly and let us know what your your position is, what your concerns are. You can ask questions of the applicant, all of that kind of stuff. Okay? All right, so with that, Brian, why don't you take it away?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the ZBA for taking the time to conduct multiple hearings, a site inspection, and eventually running your decision in this matter. I know it's been many, many months. I appreciate everybody's efforts. Yeah, the ZBA has heard all of our arguments many times now, so I don't want to rehash all of those arguments. But if it's okay with you, Mr. Bergen and the ZBA, I would like to hit on a couple of things that we briefly talked about. And you had asked us to follow up on, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Okay, great. So you know, the first thing, there was a couple submissions by Mr. Raplansky and Tour and Barone. So I just wanted to hit on a few of those. And then, as I indicated earlier, Mr. Bergen, you had asked us to do a little case research, which we did do, and we did find a few cases that I think are important that were in our submission that was submitted last week, I believe. So the the first one is Tour and Barone argued that a special use permit was required to remove trees pursuant to town code one twenty five dash sixty eight N N, which pertained to major excavation and or tree clearing. As discussed at the last hearing, the section specifically states that it does not apply to mining type activities such as this one. So therefore, if there if Tour and Barone is trying to argue that this is a mining activity that was done, this section certainly does not apply. And I know that's something that we briefly talked about last time. Alternatively, if they are arguing that the removal of trees in and of itself was a violation irrespective to mining, then this section still does not apply. Under the code, clear cutting is defined as the indiscriminate removal of all or most trees, regardless of size and maturity for a purpose other than development. Well, in this case, Red Wing's removal was just a minimal number of trees from its forested property. And it certainly does not meet the definition of clear cutting. I know originally we said that there was approximately ten trees that had been taken down. That was at the time of the highway superintendent visit. I've now been informed by my client, because I guess this came up at the last meeting, there was might have been a little confusion. So there's originally ten trees taken down. Then thereafter, prior to the notice of violation, another seven or ten trees were taken down in order to have a little additional clearing. Regardless of the exact number, we're talking ten, twenty, let's say even thirty trees. The board has been out there, the ZBA rather has been been out there. This property is a hundred and forty something acres. We're talking about ninety four acres at issue. The thirty or forty trees that may have been taken down are actually twenty or thirty. And even if it was forty, this is a very, very, very small number. But I think the number is really closer to twenty or under. This is a very minimal amount of trees, and it certainly doesn't constitute tree clearing. And I think the ZBA was there, could see that with their own eyes. Just moving forward, because I know we have limited time here, and also we've gone over everything many, many times. The one thing that Mr. Bergen, you had asked us to do is is research what a stay means in the context of this case and how that should be dealt with. So I would like to draw the ZBA's attention to Lindler versus Incorporated Village of Freeport case. It's under sixty one miscellaneous second six six sevens. And this is in our in our reply, you don't have to write that down. And we outlined that case as well. And without getting into all the facts of that case, just a quick summary. And without getting into all the facts of that case, uh, just a, a quick summary of it. Cause obviously you'll be able to look it up and talk to your counsel about it. The, the village issued the plaintiff a building permit in that case, and the plaintiff commenced construction accordingly. Thereafter, the, the village withdrew the building permit, then the plaintiff filed an appeal to the ZBA. After the appeal was filed, the building inspector directed the plaintiff to stop work and threaten to arrest the plaintiff's workers. The village argued uh, to the ZBA um, that the, or I think this was to the court rather, that the section of village law granting a stay. Does not reinstate a revoked building permit or prescribe action by the building inspector to prevent plaintiff from continuing to build. After revocation of the permit. While the court clarified that the statute requires the building inspector to act as though the permit had not been revoked. Unless he files a certificate of imminent peril. The court further stated that an interpretation preventing the plaintiff from continuing construction. Would leave wholly meaningless the provision that by the filing of the certificate of imminent peril, the automatic stay provisions obviate. Uh, ultimately, the court agreed with the plaintiff and granted an injunction preventing the village from interfering with construction. So I think this case is very important as it goes in line with what we've been saying this whole time is right when that stay was lifted. Or uh, what was, was enacted rather, at the time the notice of violation, um, the notice of appeal of the violation was filed. That any action that happened thereafter brought Red Wing prior to the, the time of the notice of violation. I think that's what this case says. I think that fully supports it. Uh, and it's, it's right in line with that.
Is, isn't it a little bit different though? And then I'm not, I haven't read the case and I don't mean to take it a task, but. You know, in the, in the case you cited, there was a building permit that was granted. And here, the issue is whether you needed to have a special use permit and site plan approval. So the approvals were not granted in this case, and you're saying you don't need them versus in the case uh, that you cited. There was a building permit put in place and then it was revoked. So is that a distinction without a difference or?
Well, I believe it is a distinction without a difference, because at the time that they did the work, there was no building permit. The time that we're talking about that stayed period of time, there was no building permit. It had been revoked. So it's the same situation that we have here, where there is no building permit. And I think moreover, it's, if you take the bigger picture of that case, it, it shows that a stay uh, brings you back to prior time.
But I, I guess, again, getting it.
Can you make it lower?
There was ultimately a building permit put in place that it was revoked versus here. There never was a special use permit and site plan approval because you never went through the process because you didn't, because your argument is you don't need to do it. So I guess.
Correct.
Yeah, so I guess that, that kind of is somewhat of a distinction in my mind. I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, um, that's just the first thing that strikes me is that, you know, in the one case, the permit was put in place, whether work was done or not, but the permit was put in place. Versus here, there hasn't been any permit put in place because you say you don't need it, and uh, again. I'll take a look at both, at, at the case, but I just.
Yeah, no, I'd encourage you to, I encourage you to look at the case, and also, we're not talking about the exact same set of facts here. We're not talking about an appellate division, second department, saying we had a vested right to mine. They, they're, they're not exactly the same case, obviously, but I think what's important is at the time that the work was done, there was no permit put in place. There was uh, uh. A um, the work, they're saying that they couldn't have done that, and the stay was then put in place and the court agreed that. The stay then brings them back to the, the prior time. So I understand what you're saying, because the prior time there was a building permit, but it's not exactly the same set of cases, and I think. Looking at this case generally at a big picture says what a stay actually does. And I don't think there's any other cases, and there certainly hasn't been any other case submitted by the town that even speaks at all as to what the stay would do. So I think that, that would be uh, certainly important, and I encourage you to look at that case.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I, I see it on page two.
Yep, and then uh, you know, the second case I'd like to draw the ZBA's attention to is on the premature issue. Um, so similar, but a little different. It's not exactly the stay. But again, Red Wing asserts that the notice violation was premature as it was issued at the time that only a few trees had been cleared and nothing else had occurred. Uh, in support of this argument, we cited to Lake Mulhoppic Heights versus zoning board of appeals, town of Carmel. That's one nineteen. On N Y S second eight oh nine in our recent submission, and again, I'm not going to get into all the facts of that case, but I'm just going to highlight what the court stated in that case and. And I encourage the, the board to certainly review that and look at that. And again, there's been no cases submitted by the town that says otherwise to this as well. But the court in that case stated, it is clear that neither the board of appeals nor the zoning inspector have general injunctive powers. If there's merely a threatened violation of a zoning ordinance, the remedy is applied to the courts and the rights of the parties may be adequately adjudicated and protected. The court pointed out that at the time the season desist order was served, there were no structures and no building permits had been applied for. In other words, no portion of the premises was in violation of the ordinance at the time. There was merely a threat of non-compliance. I think that's similar to here. All we had done was taken down some trees at the time that that notice of violations was filed and the season desist was put in place. The court further opined that the town law did not authorize a zoning inspector or zoning board of appeals to make. And serve his or its own written order restraining a mere threatened violation. Again, drawing this ZBA to April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one of this year. All there was done is some trees that were taken down, so. Uh, we're arguing that was just the threatened violation. The, the violation was premature at that point. And ultimately, the court held that there was no evidence of a violation of town ordinance as there is no improvement of the property yet. Well, at the time that this was done, there was no road that had been commenced. Nothing had been done. All of that took place after the uh, notice of. Was put in place. Um, so here is in Lake Mulhoppic, at the time the notice of violation, the mine access road had not been constructed nor had construction begun. Only trees had been taken down. Similarly, no construction took place between April twenty-seventh and May twentieth, which was the dates of the notice of violation and the notice of appeal. Uh, which, and therefore the Z O, Z E O had no authority to issue the notice as it was based mere on threatened violation, which was the cutting of the trees. Um, you know, and by way of this appeal, Red Wing respectfully requests that the ZBA dismiss the violations against Red Wing. Remove the season desist that is illegally preventing Red Wing from engaging in their mining activities, uh, including the construction of a mine access road. And unless there's any questions, I again want to thank the ZBA for all of your time and efforts and all the meetings that we've had on this, including the site inspection two weeks ago.
Hey, thank you. Um, now I assume there's some folks uh, out there in Zoom land who would like to be heard. So um, whoever would like to be heard, please unmute. Again, state your name and your address and either your, your questions, your. Concerns or whatever you want to say respectfully. Is there anybody out there who wants to be heard? Don't all unmute at once.
And Scott, just for the record, we did receive um, comments from Mr. and Mrs. LeBowski.
Can you unmute?
I saw that.
And then Paula and Michael Trimble as well, and I think uh, George Raskas, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that.
Yes.
Seems like he wants to speak.
Trouble with the unmuting part. I apologize.
That's okay. All right, uh, you, you, you have the floor. If you could just, again, state your name and your address and uh, whatever questions, concerns.
Uh, I'm George Raskakis. Uh, I live at one oh three White Schoolhouse Road. Um, my concerns are many, but uh, pursuant to this issue. Um, it seems to me that as a homeowner, as a landowner. If I wanted to do any building on my property, I would be required to obtain a permit. Uh, whether um, a court gave me a right to mine or a right to do anything, I would still need a permit. From the local municipality, and I think that is really at issue here that no permit was obtained to move forward. Uh, the second thing, and uh, this has to do with, with Mr. Kelleher said was that. Um, and he, he said something that struck me, which was that the taking down of the trees had nothing to do with mining. And then the second thing that he said was that uh, the Court of Appeals had said that they have a, a right to mine. Therefore, why were the trees taken down except to create a road for mining? So um, that doesn't make sense. It's a specious argument. So um, I completely disagree with uh, Mr. Kelleher's uh, argument when it comes to that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Bergen, can I respond to that real quick?
You can respond to it, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I think he misunderstood the argument. The argument is very specific to the Town Code one twenty-five sixty-eight N N, which specifically. Um, and actually explicitly states that it does not ha- have to do with mining. So when the Tour and Barone firm. Filed their, served their papers arguing that this applied, my argument is, well, you can't have it both ways. So either this section doesn't apply because. There was mining activity going on, which was the tree clearing to make the mine. Or if it does apply, then you're arguing that all it was, was tree clearing, and in order for it to be tree clearing. There has to be substantial clearing of the vast majority of the property, which this was not.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, Catherine, you have your hand up. You need to unmute. Yeah, you've, you've got to unmute so we can hear you.
Okay.
There, there you go. Uh, could you state your name and your address and then your questions and concerns?
Catherine Morrison. I live at seventy-one Livingston Street in the village. So I'm not a directly affected property owner in this case. Um, is it, uh, is it not customary to read the written comments uh, uh, in, into the record at this meeting?
Uh, well, we, we have done that in the past, or depending on the person. I mean, sometimes folks have already uh, said their, what. What they've had to say, and then they, they give us additional written uh, comments, and we just make them part of the record. And they are considered because they are part of the official record. A lot of times what a, a person does is that they'll come to the meeting such as this, they'll have their written uh, notes, and then they'll read them into the record for us.
I see.
And the, the comments um, are available. Uh, they are the part of the record. The ZBA has all read them. They are part of the record. And if you would like to see them, um, you can always ask um, Gretchen uh, for our copy pursuant to foil.
Okay, my question was purely procedural.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. LeBowski? It, it looks like you're unmuted.
No.
No.
I think he, he's been unmuted the whole.
Oh, okay. Would you like to be heard?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, right.
I, I sent something today.
Yes.
Yep.
I, I, I saw that. Okay, I just, I, I saw the unmuted, so I just wanted to ask. All right, there's a cou- there's a couple of other folks out there who are here. Um, and um, I guess, uh, Michael Trimble, are you next?
Um, I'd just like to make a correction to Mr. Kelleher's interpretation of clear cutting. Clear cutting is not necessary for the majority of a property. Very often, we have homeowners who have property, for example, they want to clear cut. Uh, scenic views through forested areas, things of that sort. By no means is it the majority of their property. Then they need to get a special use permit from the planning board to do so. Uh, it, it does not need to be the majority of the property to uh, require that permit for clear cutting. I just want to make that correction.
And Mr. Bergen, I'll read the quote directly from the code, which says, "The indiscriminate removal of all or most trees. Regardless of size or maturity for a purpose other than development." So it's actually right. It's not majority, it's all or most, and this is certainly not the case.
That's not been the um, manner in which that law has been applied in the town of Rhinebeck while I've been on the planning board.
It sounds like reasonable minds can differ.
I, perhaps so.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Michael, and thank you, Ryan. And uh, do, I, I see some other names out there. Um, does anybody else want to be heard? Again, now is the opportunity because. My intention at this point in time, since we've had multiple public hearings. And uh, the um, the board has had an opportunity to go do a site inspection, is to close the public hearing tonight, so. This is your last opportunity to be heard, uh, if in fact you want to be heard. I'm not. Forcing anybody, but you know, if you do want to be heard, this is the time. Going once? Going twice? All right, I uh, I see that uh, while there are folks here, nobody has unmuted in order to give any additional comments. Um, the record should reflect that uh, we have had many, many comments from many, many people, uh, both oral and written. And um, and I think at this point in time, um, we have all the information we need. The arguments have been made multiple uh, times and, and the board understands them. Um, so at this point in time, I'd make a motion that we uh, close the public hearing. Um, unless, let me ask Tim or Richard, do you have any questions, concerns, anything else you would like to um, address?
Uh, well, actually, I'm kind of confused about the number of trucks. We, we were talking about landscaping trailers. And then we were talking about ten trucks and then uh, some, some uh. Information was brought in about other sites that Red Wing owns that uh, is very limited. Um, so what's, what is the number of trucks?
We, we don't know, because we've never mined this area. There was a different individual who was mining this area. Uh, at one of the last hearings, Mr. Bergen or somebody on the ZBA had asked for some sheets from other mines, uh, as far as what the average trucks were. During average days, and that's what we submitted. There was somewhere around twenty, twenty-five maybe. Uh, and you know, that's what it is, but there has been no mining on this site from Red Wing before. It's, Mr. Doherty got up a, a couple hearings ago, I believe, and said he expects it to be around twenty to twenty-five trucks.
All right, so then, so for twenty-five trucks, you're going to have fifty times trucks are going by down White Schoolhouse Road.
But yeah, if, if you're saying they have to come to the mine and then leave?
Yeah.
Right. And that's an average day, so it could be five.
It could be more.
Could be.
Or it could be, or it could be more.
It could be more.
Yep.
But what he expects there to be is, is, is around twenty or so.
And I think the other, another issue was what type of trucks we were talking about, you know? How much can they carry? How big are they and that kind of stuff? Because it is, it is a fairly windy country road, uh, White Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah, and I, and I know that Mr. Doherty has spoke about this in the past. Um, Frank, I don't know if you're on, if you want to, I can see that. It looks like you're on. I don't know if you want to chime in on this real quick. Uh, if, if he is, I'm happy to have him do so. Um, but ultimately, and respectfully, the amount of trucks does not have anything to do with the issues that we're here for today, but if he's there. Certainly let him uh, chime in to, to talk about that.
Hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, tri axles hold about twenty-five tons, trailers hold thirty-five to forty. Uh, and the little six-wheelers hold about five tons. I know Richie Von der Leef runs tri axles all the time. Uh, nobody runs ten-wheelers anymore, because they don't even build those ten-wheelers anymore. Every, every truck has, is a tri axle now.
Catherine, did you want to be heard?
Yeah, um, I, I think that given the um. The kind of hasty building of the road onto uh, uh, the access road onto White Schoolhouse Road. And given what is going to be the um, um. The strongly unpleasant effects of the truck traffic on White Schoolhouse Road. Um, it would seem to me that this is going to be the major issue uh, 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 before this group. But what, you know, and what the forum is for the review. There's been an earlier traffic study done by the county. I had, understand there's one pending that we have had no um, uh, access to what the thinking is on that. But I think we should kind of face up to the fact that that's going to be the next major battle that Mr. Doherty is going to have to face.
Yes, well, and, and that may be, but that is um. Each agency has distinct responsibilities, so while we, we. each agency has distinct responsibilities. So while we we like to uh find out what we're dealing with here, really, the only issue is whether a special use permit and site plan approval were required here. That's the that's the issue. We do want to find out obviously what else, you know, what's other aspects about the of of the operation, but w- we have a very um limited area that that we have to deal with and other agencies will deal with.
Right. Uh, but what weren't they, weren't they doing that in violation of of the stop work order that had been imposed by this by this board?
That is the issue before the 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 building of the roadway and and yes, that is, that is what is before this board, whether they needed to uh go and get a special use permit uh and site and get site plan approval before they did that. That is what we're talking about here. That's the argument.
Right, and they proceeded in in violation of the stop work order because they did not have it. And as far as I understand, there is no permit ready for approval at this point.
The the argument, the argument is, is if you didn't need it, you're not in violation. And that's why we're here. We're here to do an interpretation and find out whether they needed to do that.
I see. So you will decide whether this was needed or not, and whether they are in violation.
Right.
Right. Okay, thank you.
We're a quasi judicial organization and that's our our very narrow.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay, I see some other names. Anybody else who would like to be heard before I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I I have another question. So if if we're talking about how come how come Red Wing did not go for in front of the planning board? Or did you?
For this road?
Yeah.
Because our argument is the appellate division and the second department gave us a vested right to mine. The road is not is outside the mining overlay district. Any special use permit that's needed for mining is only within the mining overlay district. This road is outside of it, and our argument is that we did not need it.
But if it's outside the overlay, wouldn't you need one then?
No, because these the appellate division said that we have a vested right to mine that area. So if the any mining can't be done outside the mining overlay district, but it can if you have a vested right to mine nonconforming use, which is what the appellate division decided that we do have.
So the appellate division, did they approve the driveway?
It was part of the application. It wasn't the specific uh issue. The specific issue was whether Red Wing had shown its overt manifestation to mine areas outside that thirty-seven and a half acres, which is within the mining overlay districts.
What if the, did the appellate say anything about the driveway?
Nope, but it was part of the application. It was an issue and it was part of the town's argument uh as to why there was no manifestation of a vested right to mine. So it certainly was part of the arguments. It was heard by the court. The court's decision uh was not a very lengthy or specific one. It was part of the record as well. But but any comment needed?
Yes, um, all right, um.
If if, let me say one thing there. Scott, if anybody in Rhinebeck is going to cut a road anywhere, we would have to get a permit. We we you know, we have to go in front of the highway supervisor and it it's there's no other way of doing it.
Well, um, our legal counsel uh will assist us in, and this is a little bit unique because we're talking about a mining operation. We do have an appellate division decision, which is not, uh, doesn't specifically say anything about this. And I think what the applicant is sa- saying is that um logically, it follows from the court's decision that they're allowed to do this.
I I think they're taking liberties, uh frankly, and um I hope that you will rule against this. Uh, the vested right to mine is not a golden ticket to uh thumb your nose at the local municipality, which is exactly what's being done here. Um, I really oppose this vehemently.
Scott, can I make a comment?
Uh, yes, and and just for the record, um, Kim, are you able to get down the names of the folks who are speaking and all that? So we 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 know who is talking?
Uh, the last person who spoke was um George Raskus.
Okay.
Um, I I don't, this is the first time I'm recording. Um, usually Fred in the past has done it, so I don't know how it will show up on the screen, but um, the last person who spoke was George Raskus. And I think Michael and Paula uh would like to add something. I I just want to say to Richard, I'm sorry, yes, Richard. Um, we will be uh John Grant and Lyons uh will be briefing some of these legal issues. Um, if the board wants, we will have um, and we have done this in the past. Uh, we have had attorney client um privileged meetings with the ZBA members to kind of go over some of the legal issues um and just kind of uh review those legal issues for your deliberation.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, just going forward, I know we're getting towards the end of this, but just state your name.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment if I could. Scott, if it's all right?
Oh, absolutely, Michael. I just, I just want to make sure everybody, just so the record is clean and clear. Just uh state, you know, for the record who you are and then, because we're not sure how this recording is going.
Live on Slate Quarry Road.
Okay.
You know me because your cars have crashed in front of my house. I think it's important to note that Red Wing has a permit to mine nine acre sub aquaous mine within the thirty-five acre life of mine. It is a conforming use. In order to access that mine, they need a permit from the town of Rhinebeck to utilize White Schoolhouse Road for access to the mine. The town and the mine land reclamation law fully recognizes the town's authority to govern where they enter White Schoolhouse, if there's a safe place to do it, which direction they go in. We've also limited to every different permit we've offered for mining on that road, the limit to the size of trucks, given the nature of the road and the, you know, the danger to public safety. So right now it is not a nonconforming use that they're accessing to that mine. The DEC has not accepted the application for any mining to take place outside the existing life of mine district that is legally a conforming use in the town of Rhinebeck. Therefore, it's a conforming use, a conforming mine they are trying to access. And therefore, there is no question whatsoever. They require a permit from the town of Rhinebeck to use White Schoolhouse Road to access that mine. And that's the argument that I believe is before you. And thank, and I also want to thank you for all the time you guys have taken because uh I know from the planning board side, I know it's tough and I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And uh, I respect you for it and I thank you for the time given to us.
Well, it's an important issue and everybody needs to be heard and and that's the most important thing. Okay. I hesitate to ask, but I will ask one more time. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to be uh like to be heard?
Yeah, this is um uh Luke Sullivan um and and Jennifer Mum. Uh, we are at sixty-seven Hilltop Road.
Okay.
Um, and we would also uh li- like to, I suppose, reinforce the arguments and restate the arguments that the uh, the group opposing this use as a nonconforming use. Um, uh, you you know, have made on this call and in various other public hearings. Uh, we think it's a significant issue for the area. We think it's a significant issue for the planning board. We think it's a significant issue for the town. And we think that it will become a more significant issue uh should should the town uh not rule in the vein that you have carried on your uh conversations or uh conduct, I would say in regard to Red Wing uh to to this point in time, which is that you've instructed them or provided them with a stay because they were uh nonconforming uh in 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 their, you know, in their use of that road. So I I I I think again, this has the potential to be a much, much larger issue in the in the broader community here. And and this is what we're um, you you know, this is what we're becoming active to um, you 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 know, to try and provide some support for. So 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 we would expect the planning board to um, we 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 expect the planning board to uh oppose in the fullest extent uh this action from Red Wing and continue to oppose this uh in the fullest extent.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else who would like to be heard before I uh make the motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And I've said this every single time. I I um, I I very, I appreciate very much um how respectful people have been. I know there are strong feelings. Uh, and rightfully so on both sides. Uh, but everybody has been respectful uh in making their um comments. And 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 that's what this is all about respectfully, making comments. Uh, and and there've been great comments. Uh, and and I appreciate the fact that everybody has behaved so professionally. So I just want to commend you for that. All right, at this point in time, I will make a motion that uh we close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Tim seconding, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and let the ref- record reflect that that's myself, Scott Bergen, Tim Econopoly and Richard Kopfinski. Uh, we have all said uh yes, so the public hearing is now closed. Uh, folks, that means that our time to start uh working on this, uh, well, we've been working on it, I suppose, to some degree, but uh our time to render a resolution is beginning. It'll be sixty-two days. Uh, I do not anticipate we are going to have a resolution at the next meeting. Uh, but we may have, well, we'll we'll definitely have a a resolution by the December meeting. One uh thing that um comes up from time to time. And Kim, I don't know if you have done a calculation.
I have not. I'm trying to do it quickly, but I we usually are off by a day or two.
We're usually off by a day. Um, because it's going to take us some time uh to uh cull through all the information and to uh put together a um resolution. This is not your usual resolution. Um, most of the time, uh, and I'm going to direct this to uh Ryan Keller. Uh, we the 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 second meeting, not the November one, but the the December one usually falls on like the sixty-third day. Um, do you have any quarrel with uh granting an extension of a day or whatever it is, assuming we run into that problem? Sometimes it's the sixth uh six sixty-second day, but depending on how things fall, we can be a day off.
Yeah, I think a day or two is no problem.
Okay. Because that has happened in the past and uh people have graciously uh agreed to extend it. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So just for clarity, the December meeting looks to be December fifteenth. Um, so um, if we need an extension, we can uh, Ryan, can we have an extension till December fifteenth in case it's outside that sixty-two days?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, just based on my calculations, it sounds like December twenty-first is sixty-two days. I just did that off my head, but that's seems to be the timeframe. So December fifteenth would be within sixty-two days.
Okay, it might be. I I didn't, I didn't want to rush my calculating because I used to be better. I've gotten a little slower.
It it's come up from time to time. I and and that's why I I bring it up. So all right, well, um, that's it for Red Wing. Thank you very much for everybody. Thank you for um your oral presentations, your written presentations and um and all your efforts in this case. Uh, so that is it for um this evening. I unless there, is there any old business?
Nope, I don't believe so. No resolutions.
Okay, and we have no resolutions. Um, so at this point in time, uh, I will entertain a motion to uh adjourn and close the meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Don't second so fast. Um, all right, um all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so uh we're adjourned. Uh, Kim, thank you very much for um uh, you know, doing this. I appreciate it. Gretchen, uh, where are you? Uh, Gretchen, congratulations on your first meeting. And Jim, thanks. Uh, Jim, uh, thank you for for attending and and getting the lay of the land and see what we do. And um I guess uh that is it. Good evening, everybody.
Goodbye. Thank you.
All right, take care.